Good evening. Planning Board is now in session. First item on the agenda, public hearing, major site plan review, Zero Furman Ave. At 7:00 and at 7:05, which is now, which is now, request for an extension, special permit Okay. Public hearing notice for the site plan approval per Section 174-10F of the South boro zoning code. The planning board of the town of Southboro shall hold a public hearing on Monday, February 8th, and as you know, because of the snow, it was moved to tonight at 7:00. At the Thomas J. McAuliffe Hearing Room, second floor townhouse, to consider the application of NREF, third, the Third Pleasant LLC for site plan approval at 7:00 PM. This hearing concerns the renewal and approval of the site plan approval for this site that was granted February 24th, 2014. A copy of the plans and applications may be reviewed at the office of the planning board. At the townhouse during normal business hours, any person wishing to be heard on the proposed plan should appear at the time and place designated. Signed by myself, Chairman of the Planning Board. I'll call on Attorney Garrahan to give us an overview of how we got here and what you're asking the planning board to do. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. For the record, I'm Catherine Garrahan.
Oh, is it on, Terry? Yeah, hold on a second.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, I'm Catherine Garrahan from the law firm of Boudage and Dewey, and with me is Kevin Daly from the applicant, Normandy Real Estate Partners, and NREF 3. The, as you may recall, the property is an eight and a half acre site, which is located on both sides of Furman Avenue in Southboro, and the abutting property at Pleasant Street Connector and New York Avenue, rear and Framingham. In Southboro, the site is in the industrial district. The applicant is submitting to the board to extend the expiration date of your 2014 approvals related to the Southboro portion of the site. The approvals were set forth in the board's decisions for site plan approval and for lower impact development special permit. These approvals allow the redevelopment of an existing office building by expanding it from a 93,000 square foot building to an 156,000 square foot building, and adding parking, traffic and pedestrian improvements, landscaping and drainage improvements. Regarding the site plan approval, the board initially voted to approve the site plan in February 2014, and the town clerk certified it as to no appeal on March 24th. One year ago, you granted a one-year extension for that site plan approval until March 24th, 2016, one month from now. The applicant has determined that it's unreasonable. It's going to be able to begin work on its construction in that one-month time from now. So it has submitted an application to renew the approval. Where the approval, where the extension was already granted once, this has been submitted in the form of a new application with a new public hearing, as required by your bylaw. The applicant is requesting an additional one-year extension through March 24th, 2017. Regarding the lower impact development special permit, that was voted on the same day in February 2014. February, it was February 24th, 2014, and consistent with state law, that approval was for two years. So this is the first time an extension has been requested. And under state law, the permit would expire two years from the date of its issuance, which does not include time required to wait for a determination of an appeal, and the board may extend for an additional two years, providing that you find that the extension is for good cause, that the applicant was unable to begin its construction by the expiration date for good cause. Unfortunately, there was an appeal for the Framingham portion of the approvals, but it was settled very quickly in 53 days. So what we were, so adjusting for that tolling period, the, our calculation is that your 2014 lower impact special permit expires on April 17th, 2016. The, so we are, this determination did, does not require that you have a public hearing, as long as you, you find that this is for good cause. The, for your reference, I'll go through the few bullet points we have about the good cause that my client has had in being unable to start the construction. But just for your reference, last week, the Framingham Planning Board unanimously approved the request to extend out their permitting for two years, their site plan review and special permits for this project. The reasons the applicant has been unable to begin construction on its permits that we request you consider to be good cause include that due to the market conditions, teneting has been a much longer process than anticipated and hoped, the economics of site redevelopment are to find, if possible, a single tenant to take most, take all or most of the building to build to suit rather than on spec. The applicant has begun some internal demolition and tenant fit-out work pursuant to a building permitted obtained from the Southboro Building Commissioner on the Southboro side of the building, but further work is going to require tenant identification. The applicant has rigorously marketed the property, continues to tour the site to prospects. It has, it has had several promising inquiries, but none yet have resulted in a lease. The applicant has ramped up its efforts with a new sign and branding, which you may have noticed, with the site being called Metro Tech. It has pursued and obtained a listing for the site on the state's Ready Mass 100 listing by Mass Econ, which includes 100, 100 properties that are shovel-ready and met criteria ready, related to infrastructure permitting size and readiness, which is a great development. It, the applicant's engaged a transwestern RBJ to ensure that it's marketing as aggressive as possible, and it's using new tools such as video marketing. The applicant's put a large amount of money into permitting and its initial work, and as soon, it's ready to begin as soon as its teneting is clarified. I don't know if the board has additional questions for, for the applicant about its efforts. We're happy to answer anything.
Thank you very much. I see, I know you mentioned this, but you did send us an email on, last Friday, telling us about the Framingham approvals, extending it out to March 16th, 2018.
Yes.
So, the first item is the public hearing, which is for the major site plan review. Now, you have properly submitted an application for major site plan review, which we all And in it, you say, "The applicant respectfully requests that the Southboro Planning Board renew its site plan review approval of the applicant's proposal by approving the same project contemplated by the 2014 decision." So that's the part of the agenda that we're on right now, and then we'll go to that lower impact. Now, there was a letter dated January 19th from the Public Health Director in Southboro regarding the food part of the building. You got that?
Yes.
Okay. That was kind of like a, just so you don't get a surprise later. There was also a certification from Kelly Engineering Group-
Right.
-that we received stating that the plan is the same.
Yes.
No changes.
Identical plan.
Yep. And that's really the key to making it easy here for us tonight, because the board has already approved this plan once, once before. We also received an email on February 1st from the DPW Director in Southboro. It talks about some previous discussions with their, with the engineer, the town engineer, and it concludes, it says, "The DPW has no objections to renewing the approval." So with that, I guess I'll open it up to the, to the board. Mrs. Bartolini.
I have really no problems with the, with the thought of extending this, and as well as the LID, the lid. I just have a question, maybe it's helpful for marketing. Are you aware that the, that the town of Framingham is proposing to change the zoning-
Yes.
-for, for that area? So, I was hoping you'd be able to coordinate with that and maybe get, in the process of marketing that whole area now with eight-story buildings and multiuses, that would also help you go forward and find, find the tenant that you want.
Yes, we're aware. We've been, we've been in discussions with Framingham. We understand what they're doing. We're not really, I mean, it's, we're supportive of it because it helps our property. We're trying to keep the project, you know, as it is, but I agree, if we can get some other activity in that area with a mixed use, it'll give us a better marketing in terms of position out there to get a, you know, to get that anchor tenant that we're, that we're, you know, hoping for.
Okay. Well, that was me giving, I don't have any questions for you. I just wanted the information. I'm done.
You did say extending, and the applicant, the applicant's word was renew, which in this case means it's a fresh new application, as if we're starting from the very first minute. However, because it's the exact same plan that we approved previously, it's renewing it in that context. Mr. Mills?
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Just curious, is the, so when we renew the application, or if we renew?
I think the, I think the motion would be to approve the site plan, as if, as if we hadn't seen this before.
Right. Well, my question was, is it, do you foresee that if you don't get that anchor tenant in two years, you could be back before us again asking for another extension? Or you think it's going to be-
I mean, we've been marketing it for two years. We've had some good traction out there with a few tenants that have, we've gone deep in negotiations with, but to be honest with you, we've looked at this as, it is, we want to make a 155,000 square foot building. We really want to get like an anchor of a, you know, 90,000 square foot to kind of jump off the project. It is a significant investment in the building and the, you know, the cost of the project. We want to keep that as the focus. We may step back and come back with something if it doesn't take traction in the next couple of years. We may modify that plan, but we really want to do the, you know, what we've proposed here on a, on a Class A product in terms of really, you know, in that building, it, it changes it, you know, dramatically. So we've had a lot of good traction with a few people. It's just very hard, you know, we're looking at, there's, it's a very small, you know, a lot, not looking for 10,000 and 20,000 square foot tenants to fill up that building. We've had discussions with a couple of, you know, people that have been looking in that area. They're few and far between to try to land those, you know, anchor headquarters. But we, you know, we've had some good traction. We hope to have it done in the next, you know, within the next couple of years.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Mr. Jenks?
Mr. Chairman, I have no comments on the facility or the marketing effort or anything. I do suggest that the motion include the word renewal, only to tie it into the past history. And if I understand it correctly, the renewal would imply a one-year period, but would allow a one-year extension at that point. Yes?
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Stein? All set. I'll ask Mr. Jenks to make the motion. This would be for the site, the site plan. Mr. Jenks?
Mr. Chairman, I move that pursuant to the applicant's request, we renew the major site plan approval for Zero Furman Ave. For a period of one year from this date.
What did, yes, Mrs. Bartolini.
The, the motion is made is from this date, which is February 10th. What you have, in your opinion, and I agree with the opinion, that because of the appeal that was filed and the tolling therefore that did not, could not occur under statute, that it expired, it will expire on a date. It hasn't expired yet, in other words.
So, so that, I applied that analysis to the special permit, because that's in state law. The Southboro zoning bylaw doesn't have that, that tolling provision for site plan approval. So, as I understand it, you know, it would just be the one year, although last year, you gave your approval from the date of the expiration. So it went out beyond the date of the meeting. The meeting was in February, but you, the extension allowed it one year from, the original decision expired March 24th, 2015, and your extension last year went to March 24, 2016. Now, where this is a new project, I don't, I don't know if, you believe you have that same latitude, whether it's-
My suggestion is that we do it from, from February, out to February 24th, seven, 2017, no?
Yeah, March is the, it went from the date the town clerk certified it.
Oh, the date, fine. March 24th.
I will so amend my motion.
That way, you won't have duplicate approvals. At the, at the moment that the current approval period ends, this, this approval, if this vote carries, would kick in. Motion's been made?
Second.
And seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye. I'm an aye.
Three and a half, four to, four to zero.
Wait a minute. Do, I believe, I think we have an extension.
Mr. Stein is abstaining. Okay. That takes care of the public hearing for the major site plan review. The next one is the request for the extension, special permit, lower impact development, and you explained the difference between the two requirements. I'll go back down. Mr. Jenks?
Mr. Chairman, I will move that-
Actually, I was going to see if you had any comments. I was starting with you.
I have no comments.
Mr. Mills?
I have no comments.
Mrs. Bartolini?
No comment.
Mr. Jenks?
Mr. Chairman, I move that pursuant-
Hold on, we have, I'm sorry. We have someone from the public. I didn't see you, Carl. You got to grab a mic.
I'm here to talk about this. I just happened to, or something else, but I have to-
You have to grab a mic.
This is not what I came for, but happened, since I'm on the Conservation Commission, there's the stormwater and, isn't there stormwater and wetland? Will you need renewal for those too? Are you planning on?
I have the dates. They're not, not yet.
Okay.
We're watching it. So, let's see, Southboro, stormwater management expires on February 20th, 2017.
Okay.
So we have another year.
I couldn't remember when. I remember it coming for us. I couldn't remember when.
And the order and conditions also February 21, 2017.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the public? Mr. Jenks? Third time.
Are you sure? Mr. Chairman, I move that pursuant to the request from the applicant, we extend the special permit for lower impact development at Zero Furman Avenue for one year from its current expiration.
Second.
Counsel?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. So our request was for two years, which you're allowed to do under state law. You know, you're, and just if I can add one thing, a finding for good cause is, is something that we would, you'd need to have. And we did request that there be a tolling for the time it was under appeal. So that's, so our, our calculation was this existing permit expires April 17th of, of this year. So our request is, is for an extension until April 17th, 2018. So just to reiterate what our request was. And I, in your packets, the, the appeal information was in there with, that showed the calculation, just if you wanted to, to check that.
Mr. Jenks?
Is this number four?
I think so. Who's counting?
Mr. Chairman, I move that pursuant to the applicant's request, we extend the special permit for lower impact development upon a showing of good cause to April 17th, 2018 for Zero Furman Avenue.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Four to zero and one abstention. Very good.
Thank you.
Congratulations and good luck. Hope you have some better luck.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. See, it's now a couple of minutes before our next agenda item. We're going to need to get set up. The next item is the public hearing for the Warren article relative to the solar, as of right, large-mounted bylaw, quickly followed by the zone, Warren article for the zoning map. So we'll be back in a minute after we set up, well, actually in probably about, how many minutes, Mr. Mills?
Motion for a two-minute recess.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? Aye. We'll be back in a couple minutes. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Planning Board's back in session. It's now 7:30. We have a public hearing. Warrant article, solar as-of-right, large-ground-mounted bylaw. I'll read the public hearing notice. Notice of the public hearing. In accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, the Planning Board of the Town of Selpro will hold a public hearing on Monday, February 8th, 2016, at the beginning, at, beginning at 7:30 PM. And as you know, from the snow on Monday, February 8th, that meeting and this hearing was moved to tonight at 7:30. In the Thomas McAuliffe Hearing Room, Second Floor Townhouse, 17 Common Street, Selpro, Mass. For the following, 7:30 PM, to see if the town will vote to amend Article 3 of the zoning code by adding thereto a new section, Section 174-13.7, entitled "As-of-Right Commercial Large-Scale Ground-Mounted Solar Energy Systems." Copy of the proposed language and maps are on file with the Planning Department and can be viewed at the offices of the Selpro Planning Board and the Selpro Town Clerk during regular business hours. Any person wishing to be heard on the proposed map, on the proposed article, should appear at the time and place designated. Mr. Jesse Stein will be doing the presentation and then we'll open it up to Planning Board members and the public. Mr. Stein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We would recall at last year's town meeting, we passed a zoning bylaw which restricts commercial ground-mounted, large-scale solar arrays exceeding output of 250 kilowatts to the industrial and industrial park districts. And that passed successfully. It is now part of our zoning code. And at 2016 April town meeting, the Planning Board will propose a bylaw which is almost identical to last year's article with one key difference. And this is permission for commercial solar arrays as-of-right in a small portion of the industrial and industrial park districts. So by as-of-right per the bylaw, the definition is there is no special permit required. It will still be subject to site plan review by Planning Board and regulation by the building commissioner. The purpose of this exercise is to conform to the standards required by the state to become a green community. Grant funding is available to eligible municipalities under the statute for energy-efficient projects. And some examples are cited here with Ashland, which was designated a green community in 2012. Hopkinton designated in 2010. These communities received substantial grant funding as a result of their participation. So right at the top of the list for the criteria, which must be met in order to be deemed a green community, is adoption of such an as-of-right renewable energy allowance. So by large scale, just like last year, we are referring to commercial ground-mounted installations with nameplate capacity. And this is an industry term for a generation of power of 250 kilowatts or greater. Under current technology, this is about one acre in size or greater. And there is a great map on this slide, which is not coming through. The actual presentation, which will be presented at town meeting, will include the map. I'm not sure why it's not coming up tonight. But it is a very small portion of the western part of the town along Route 9, within those industrial and industrial park districts. And our outgoing planner specifically selected, selected those areas on the basis of, of very few, if any, residential abutters. So here's a shot of it. Unfortunately, this is what I have for tonight. But anyone who wants to view this, it's right up here. And again, a lot of this is rehashed from last year's bylaw in terms of its typical criteria, which is a relatively flat site. Must be south-facing, located close to the electrical grid, must have an enclosed perimeter fencing with the appropriate security measures, not be shaded by trees, buildings, or other obstructions. In the context of shading, the board reviewed Section 9B of Chapter 48, which allows the establishment of buffer zones and easements on neighboring properties. After consulting with town council, the board felt this was not appropriate or necessary. And just like last year, this does not regulate or restrict in any way. This, so this is, this, this material is already not only as-of-right, but not subject, I believe, to site plan review by the Planning Board, which is residential, ground-mounted, or less than 250 kilowatt output. So just to summarize, the point here is to get us to become a green community. And I feel like this is a great thing for the town in order to get the, the funding and the grants for our energy-efficient projects. That's it for me, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Thank you. Planning Board members wanna come back up? We'll open it up to questions and comments. Jesse, did you look at that file to see if that map was somewhere else maybe?
I, I have the PowerPoint presentation on my, my company or personal laptop, which I didn't want to use tonight because it is a work tool. So.
It got downloaded to that thumb drive.
I'm quite sure it is on the PowerPoint presentation. And I'm not sure why. It sort of, if you might recall, Don, at the very first slide, there's supposed to be a big picture
Yeah.
of like a huge solar array. And that didn't come up tonight. So I'm not sure where the technology failed us this evening. But rest assured, for town meeting, we'll have it.
Well, Hillary said that you, you had, did you email it or download it to that thumb drive?
No, I emailed it to Hillary.
Oh, and then she downloaded it to the thumb drive.
What happened after that, I'm not 100% sure.
Okay. Maybe she left it in the sun.
That could be.
Okay. Just waiting to see if anybody got that one. Open it up to the board, Mrs. Bartolini. Any questions or comments?
I support the article.
Mr. Mills?
I have no questions. Good job.
Mr. Jenks?
Do I understand that these, this is a selected site within the industrial park, mostly where EMC is located?
So, Mr. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just reading it.
So, to be clear, we're definitely not talking about the entire industrial, nor the industrial park district, which is part of the existing bylaw we passed last year. This is simply a very small overlay district within those areas.
And it was done within, with the consent of the owner of that property?
So this is one of those nights we're gonna be missing Jennifer because my last conversation with her, I was sure that one of the areas was in consultation with the owner of the parcel. I believe that at least 50% of this was simply Jennifer's selection based on sort of going through things. But, and she may not have had contact with all the owners of all the parcels.
I believe in my earlier discussions with the town planner, that she sent letters to the property owners of these parcels. And only one responded. And the response was positive. So in the absence of a response from the other property owners, this is what's being proposed in addition to that, that response. Are there any other questions or comments from the board, board members? Open it up to the public? Anyone wanna speak to this? Yes, sir. Why don't you come on up and?
Hi. My name's Jesse Robertson-Dubois. I live on Chestnut Hill Road. I'm new to town. I missed the town meeting last year where the initial solar zoning bylaw was passed. And I missed that you guys were reopening this. So I sort of had no information about this before yesterday, when I sort of said, oh, look, this is on the agenda again. I wanna say I'm, I'm a very big supporter of solar energy. I think it's great that Southborough is including a by-right permitting process for solar energy. That said, I, I feel like we're missing an opportunity a little bit with this. I think solar energy is going to be the future of our electrical grid. I think it's gonna be very important for our, our stability of our grid, as well as the cost and all of the broader environmental impacts. But I look at these facilities a little differently from a lot of other people. I look at them not only as someone who, you know, is a supporter of solar, but also as a farmer and as a conservationist. And I know that it's pretty rare to see these large-scale solar facilities being used for agriculture in this area. But they are used for agriculture broadly in the United Kingdom and in Europe and in other parts of the world. And I look at these things as a really good way of keeping land available for future agricultural use and for other conservation purposes over a 20- or 30-year timeframe, which is really the entire game when it comes to the development pressure that we're facing changing our communities, as well as really the timeframe that we have to look at mitigating global warming and the, and the climate change we're facing. So I come to these going, wow, how can we use investments in solar energy and a more sustainable, more dependable energy grid and pair those with investments in conservation and a more sustainable future in terms of what we want our communities to look like and where we want our food to come from? And I feel like we're missing an opportunity to put those together and use the revenue generated from these solar facilities really as a conservation finance mechanism to achieve permanent conservation of those properties so that our, you know, the folks 20, 30 years down the road can then make an informed decision about, do they wanna keep that land, perhaps the prime agricultural soils in some cases underneath these, in solar electricity generation, in solar electricity generation, as well as food production of some kind as a hybrid facility, or return them to an agricultural use? I think we've got an opportunity, if we were able to be smarter in our regulation and our, how we incentivize the construction of these, to have a double, a doubly beneficial impact from these. I recognize, coming to this process late, that you have a warrant article that's going for town meeting. Deadlines are passed for changing those, and this is coming out of your internal process. But I guess I wanted to mention this tonight because I've heard a little bit, again, coming to town after the bylaw last year, of how contentious that issue was in town, hearing a little bit about the St. Mark's proposal, how contentious some of that was. And I just wonder whether, you know, a pastoral solar facility with sheep grazing underneath panels or crops being grown between the panels would be viewed differently by the residents of this town. And I think it would be a shame to not fully investigate that. So obviously, you're not going to change the warrant article for town meeting. But I guess I would be interested in talking with you in the future about investigating, you know, possibly reopening the language in the original solar bylaw or in this one to create some sort of process that can allow these two things of land conservation as well as solar development to work hand-in-hand for a longer-term, you know, sort of double benefit for the town. There's certainly the possibility, if, if this board felt like it was worthwhile to pursue this, to then bring an amendment at town meeting to open up the bylaw further. And I would, I would be happy to work with you. And, you know, I guess I'm volunteering to do some of the legwork of researching these things. I have been doing it a bit. Anyway, I guess that's an invitation to you, a offer, as well as a little bit of a goad. Please, work on this. Let's do a better job with this rather than just putting it off into some corner where nobody has to see it. Let's see if we can achieve some real benefit to the town's landscape as well as to our electricity grid.
As I was listening, are you talking about land conservation in general? Or were you talking about agricultural uses as you cited? That it happens elsewhere, places in the country and internationally. Because, I think we can handle that without having to change the wording of the zoning, the proposed zoning article at all, if it's agriculture you're talking about.
It is particularly agriculture that I'm concerned with. I, I feel that the, the agricultural land we have, particularly the prime farmland soils and the statewide important farmland soils, which Southborough has a fair amount, are in, you know, just critically important. And I don't believe they're going to become less important as the decades go by.
I agree with you. In Chapter 48, the state zoning law provides an exemption for agriculture. So we can't zone out agricultural uses.
Oh, absolutely. But I'm talking about.
So if someone wants to do something agriculturally on a site that's by right also solar, it's permissible and we couldn't deny it.
As long as there's five acres, absolutely, yes. My, my point is I believe that the revenue stream from these large-scale solar facilities could be used to help with the conservation finance of achieving long-term land conservation of those parcels so that we don't have to wrestle with this 20 or 30 years down the road when that facility is going to be decommissioned. And then we have to decide again, is a new, you know, set of solar panels gonna be installed on this structure? Is the facility gonna be fully decommissioned and an industrial building built here? I just think putting these in the industrial zone sort of says, all right, the land is gonna be used for industrial purposes, whether that's solar for the next 20 years or whether that's a warehouse or whether that's a manufacturing facility. Whereas that, that solar use could work towards protecting prime agricultural soils that frankly, we don't have the money to protect some other way. When you look at some of the properties in town that are agricultural, being used for hay now, could be food-producing areas in the town. But frankly, what is the likelihood that Southborough is going to vote the dollars and bond against the tax revenue to protect them? Certainly to protect enough of them to really have a. Certainly to protect enough of them to really have a sustainable landscape 20, 30 years from now. And I just view the revenue that comes from these solar facilities that are compatible with agriculture as a lost opportunity if we don't capture some of that value and apply it towards protecting the land that's there for agricultural purposes as well.
So, so you're saying that any site that we're allowing by right, you would recommend that we have a provision that if it stops being used, it become, the land converts to conservation land?
No, ma'am. What I would suggest is that I would expand the by right provisions for large-scale solar facilities to include any sites with five acres or greater that are going to be used for agriculture as well. I'm, I'm envisioning hybrid uses. They do this in the UK, they do this in Europe. I know of facilities in New Jersey, North Carolina, Texas, California. It's not common in the United States. I don't want to misrepresent that. But it is possible. And I feel like if we were willing as a community to say, "Listen, we're not going to be able to protect this important piece of land that we would like to protect. It's going to go for $200, $250,000 an acre. We're just not going to have the money to do it." But this facility can help us reach a long way towards the value of protecting that land. If the solar developer and the landowner are willing to allow the use of the land for agricultural purposes while also generating electricity and ensure to the town permanent conservation as well, then we'll put up with looking at it in what otherwise might be a residential neighborhood. We all love looking at the hayfield now, but we're not gonna keep looking at that hayfield. It's going to be developed unless we come up with innovative ways to keep it in agriculture and achieve permanent conservation. And I look at these facilities as they're, for me, they're a means to two ends. One, clean renewable energy, and two, land conservation. I, I do believe that, that they can serve as conservation finance and can let us protect lands that otherwise we can't afford to protect. So, this is coming out of left field. I'm springing you on this, springing this on you. I absolutely understand that. But I would love to talk with you about it further and, and work towards this. It's something that I think could have a lot of value for the town.
My, my suggestion, sir, would be to approach the next town planner because identifying those type of parcels would be the first step in terms of creation of some sort of a proposal for an amendment for a future town meeting.
Very good. Thank you very much for your time, and thank you for working on this. I will say again, I think it's great that you're including a by right provision for solar. We need solar generation wherever we can get it. I just want to achieve two goals at once.
You're used to that.
We're, while I'm reading the, oh, sorry. Are there any other questions or comments relative to the article that we just discussed on the as-of-right commercial large-scale solar systems? Any other questions? I see we have town council would like to comment. Mr. Cipriano, good evening.
Mr. Chairman, good evening.
Thank you for joining us at the public hearing.
Thank you. No, I had submitted previously several changes to the proposed bylaw draft, and your town planner did, in fact, make all of those changes. But the only question I continue to have, and it's probably easily answerable, is in, in what is now going to be Article 35. In Section B1, applicability, there is a reference to the, the need for a special permit and site plan review by a site plan review granting authority. And it is clear that the planning board would be the site plan review granting authority. But I just questioned what the intent was as to who should be the special permit granting authority, which should also be referenced. I don't know if it was intended to be the planning board or the zoning board of appeals.
So, my, I would think that that's a typo because the whole point here is to have no special permit required, if I'm understanding.
Are you in, uh, section?
I'm in B1, applicability.
B1, applicability?
Yeah.
I think my, my guess would be that there was a lot going on when this was being formulated, and in all likelihood, you probably just intended to reprop more thoroughly, redact last year's bylaw. Again, this, it's basically the same thing, except for the as-of-right component. So, I think it's a...
Because as-of-right, yeah. As-of-right can be, as-of-right subject to a special permit. That's, that's an interpretation of the law, too. But if, if your intention is not to reference anything to do with a special permit, then my suggestion is you read the special permit reference.
We're reading our material, and we don't see the same language.
This is the draft edit from Jennifer on my suggestions. This is, all right, this is by Jennifer and by special permit. Well, I'm, I'm looking at this. Right, right. There's two references. So, there's, all right.
We're willing to pull that language.
So, what I'm understanding is there's no intention by the planning board to have anything to do with a special permit. No problem.
Correct. Thank you for picking up.
Then in this public, yeah, just do that, and then we'll check it into final legal form. But I was just pointing that out because it was not clear to me what your intent was.
This be considered a scrivener's error?
Well, this, this is considered, the legal advice that, that it be deleted, it's already been reviewed. It could, if you're viewing it as a scrivener's error, that's fine, but the public hearing is a perfect place to, to address it. Remember, I'm going to get a last chance to look at the final revised draft warrant, and if I see anything that looks improper legally, we delete it anyway. But...
Right. Well, as, as Mr. Stein stated, the, those words are, are the ones we're trying to not have.
Okay.
So, it seemed like it was a cut-and-paste error, maybe.
As-of-right with a site plan review by the planning board. Fine. Then, so noted, we've, we've cured it.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? So, there's handouts out here at, at the table if anybody wants a copy. If there's no other questions or comments on this particular public hearing, no, that's the next one, Terry, then we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the, the public hearing?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Stein, is, is that presentation on the town website yet?
Not in its current form, no. So, I will communicate with Hillary tomorrow regarding some of the points.
So, we want to be able to tell the public that they can go to the town website and see that presentation along with the language of the article real soon then? Probably won't happen tomorrow, but by next, early next week, those things should be done?
Again, I'll, I'll speak to the, I'll speak to Hillary.
Any more discussion? Own favor? All right. Five to zero. Public hearing is closed. Next public hearing on the agenda is a warrant article, zoning map update to create solar overlay district. I'll read the public hearing notice. In accordance with the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, the planning board of the town of Southborough will hold a public hearing on Monday, February 8th. And because of the storm, it's tonight. At, at 7:35 in the Thomas McAuliffe Hearing Room, second floor townhouse, 17 Common Street, Southborough, Mass., for the following. 7:35 PM to revise zoning map, Section 174-4, to reflect the proposed solar overlay district. A copy of the proposed language and map are on file with the town clerk and the building, the planning department, and can be reviewed, can be viewed at the offices of the Southborough Planning Board and the Southborough Town Clerk during regular business hours. Any person wishing to be heard on the proposed map should appear at the time and place designated. So, Mr. Stein, I'll, I'll turn this over to you to talk about the map. And we've posted it over there so that Terry can zoom in on it, and you can speak to or point to the areas on the map at the podium. You see, you see the monitor, what, what you have there, Jesse?
Yep. So, the shaded areas here are the portions of the industrial and the industrial park districts in town that will now have the as-of-right solar array capability.
That's the dark purple along the Westborough Town Line?
Correct. And I'm tracing it now, right there.
Actually...
It's not the light purple, it's just the dark...
It's just that small strip along the, the town line. The, the, is by, is the overlay district of by right?
I believe it's also this, the dark purple as well. If you want to take a recess, I can pull up in my computer that I brought.
Why don't we open it up to the public, and we'll get that cleared up and see if there's any questions while you're doing that? Anyone from, anyone from the planning board want to speak, or do we want to let Mr. Stein open it up to the public?
Just confused which color is it, dark purple, medium purple, light purple? And where is it? It's not clear on the map yet.
The comment was that the, the, it's not clear on the map, and we'll get that cleared up in a few minutes. Mrs. Bartolini? Oh, well, the other way around.
If it helps, I compared it to the current map at home, and the only change is the dark, darker purple strip along the town line. I mean, when I looked at the, the industrial park, the industrial district, they were in the medium, the light pink, the light purple, just the same. The only change was the dark purple with the yellow outline.
I, I was saying, I, at home to... Of course, right. I, I was just saying, at home today online, I compared it to the current zoning map, and the only change that I could see from the current zoning map to this proposed map was the dark purple strip of parcels along the town line. And so, it really appeared to me to be a fairly narrow strip of, I don't know, six or eight parcels, right, right abutting the Westborough Town Line, that, that I could see a change in. But again, this is your show. That's just what I saw.
Mr. Stein, I think that's, the last time we met with Jen at a meeting, that was what we were doing, was looking for the industrial locations away from the residential.
In fairness to Mr. Stein, he was, the previous article was focused on that. This map was developed by the town planner and...
But she did talk to us about it.
She did. She certainly did. And the map itself needs to be better labeled.
So, I apologize. This is why I should have just used my own laptop in the first place. As you can see, I don't know, Terry, if you can get that on the screen. As was just pointed out by the public, it is indeed the small portion of, along the town line. So, I apologize for my error in my pointing out on the other map.
Actually, Mr. Stein, the map that we have printed here in front of us is almost identical to the one you have on the screen, although the most southern parcel on our printed map is not highlighted on the screen map. So, that's another area we'll have to get cleared up.
So, and this was the presentation that was emailed to me from our planning department several weeks ago, so...
Certainly.
This is what I had to go on.
Very good. I think what we'll do, if, if there's no more questions or comments, is maybe continue this public hearing and get the maps cleared up, and then be able to present a, a clearer picture to the public as to where this overlay district is. I think in, in the previous public hearing, we made it clear what, what was allowed by right in the overlay district. We just need to clear, clean up the map. And in order to do that and properly present it again, I think we should keep the public hearing open. Any questions or comments on that, Mrs. Bartolini?
I note that the map that has the darker purple that the general public has, we have, was printed on the 29th of December. The map that you say you received from the planning department, do you have a date for it? Okay, 'cause...
It's about three weeks ago.
Okay, 'cause, but it's, it's this one. So, and so it would be the dark sections, but it might, maybe a couple of more. There's, well, one less, one more. We do have to make sure we have the right intended map. I don't want to just go to this one because that's the one I, I remembered if additional work was done by Jen just before she went out the door and she gave you or sent you a revised map. But it, the basic question is, it's just the dark purple, is the answer as to what we're talking about changing. But I make a motion that we continue this hearing to allow the planning board time to make sure that the right proposed district map is attached to the article. And that we put that on, the right one, on, instead of having Hillary put the map up tomorrow as discussed, that the map not go onto the website to cause further confusion until we know for certain which one that's being proposed. And I, for one, would be interested to know why there was a change between the December 29th and the map that was in the PowerPoint.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to continue the public hearing, and I don't think you give a date or time. So, our next meeting is February 22nd, and I see that 8:50 PM is open.
February 22nd?
February, Monday, February 22nd, 8:50. Mrs. Bartolini? Mrs. Bartolini?
You want me to restate it in other words?
No, just amend it.
I amend my motion that we continue the public hearing for the solar overlay district map until 8:50 PM on Monday, February 22nd. The purpose for the extension is to enable the planning board to determine the specific map that should be attached to the zoning article. And that that map will then be put on our website so that everyone not only can come either to the 22nd or will see it on the website to avoid confusion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Five to zero. Very good. For this particular hearing, we'll see on the 22nd. The next item on the agenda is a 7:45 public hearing warrant article to eliminate nonprofit ownership of housing for the elderly 55-plus units. I'll read the public hearing notice. "In accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, the planning board of this town of South Pro will hold a public hearing on Monday, February 8, 2016. As we know, that was moved till tonight because of the snow on February 8th. Beginning at 7:45 PM in the Thomas McCallum Hearing Room, Second Floor Townhouse, 17 Common Street, South Pro Mass for the following. 7:45 PM to amend Article 3 of the zoning code entitled 'Use Regulations' by specifically amending the following sections. 174-8.2 RA Residence A District Subsection B8. 174-8.4 BV Business Village District C7. 174-8.5 BH Highway Business District Subsection C9. 174-8.6 IP Industrial Park District Subsection C5. 174-8.7 ID Industrial District Subsection C5. 174-8.8 SP Research Scientific and Professional District Subsection A8. In each section, striking the words, quote, 'owned by a public or a nonprofit community housing organization,' end quote. So that the subsection will now read, quote, 'multifamily housing for the elderly,' end quote. The current clause, which limits ownership of a multifamily elderly housing to a, quote, 'public or nonprofit community housing organization,' end quote, is an invalid exercise of the town's zoning authority in that a town can regulate use but not ownership." A copy of the proposed language is on file with the town clerk and the planning department and can be viewed at the offices of the South Pro Planning Board and the South Pro Town Clerk during regular business hours. Any person wishing to be heard on the proposed map should appear at the time and place designated. Signed by myself, Chairman of the Planning Board. Counsel, did you want to, you want someone from the board to go through the article and then you were going to comment or did you want to do it? I forget what they told me was going to happen. I guess it'll be the first one and then you can comment. Did you want to try it, Kathy?
Okay. Actually, the hearing notice itself explains, in this case, everything that we're doing. It's for fear of having everything go down the tubes if I say this, but it's very simple. The bylaw as currently written is illegal. The bylaw says that a nonprofit has to own and operate the over 55 housing. And as stated in the, by the chairman in the meeting hearing notice, Chapter 48 does not allow a community to control ownership of property. 48 is only for what kinds of land uses are allowed and where they're allowed and the density of that, but not the actual who can own it. So, we're simply going through every spot in the bylaw. And that's why the, one, two, three, four, five districts that allow for over 55 housing has to, each section has to have the words removed that says, 'owned by a public or a nonprofit community housing organization,' and just simply read, 'multifamily housing for the elderly.' The irony of this whole thing is we already have over 55 projects in this community that are totally constructed by private sector. So, we were legally doing the right thing, even if by accident. But now we're going to try to get the bylaw to actually reflect what the courts have said you have to have. So, it's, this is sort of, if we don't vote for it, we're in trouble because we can't leave our bylaw the way it is.
Not too many bylaws where we delete words or warrant articles where we delete words. Any more, Mrs. Bartolini?
I think that's as self-explanatory as I can do it.
Mr. Mills, any questions, comments?
No, I think, you know, Kathy, you might be able to explain this better than me. But I think there's a perception that if it's owned by a nonprofit, that it would be more affordable for an over 55 community, whether that's right or wrong.
There could, there can be that perception, but...
So, I think I don't...
I would not say that's true.
Right. And I just don't want, people might be hearing this for the first time to interpret that by removing this, it's going to change what could actually be built or would be available for over 55.
The site locations, the type of housing, the density of that housing, whether...
My point...
Whether lands accounted and the open lands are not and what percentage are, all that language stays completely the same. The only thing, and it does not say, it is, by removing the words, 'owned by a public or nonprofit,' and taking them out does not mean that we don't allow public or nonprofit. It's just anyone who wants to build this kind of housing can build it.
So, technically, we're not limiting what should have been done in the past either and we're not changing it or making it more restrictive.
Catholic Charities, the Jewish Family for Housing, Habitat, all those are still eligible applicants. It just doesn't limit it to only those kind of applicants.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Jenks?
No questions on that.
Mr. Stein?
Mr. Chairman, my understanding is that the legal comment came as a result of a case that is currently still pending in the courts. Is that correct?
I don't think so.
Mr. Cipriano?
See, Aldo, we do always need you.
While Aldo's coming to the mic, I just wanted to say that town council has looked at this and submitted a letter to the town planner dated December 9th with some guidance. And then, most recently, on January 8th, town council provided additional guidance in a letter.
The genesis of the issue of that language was in an appeal of a zoning board of appeal decision that, in effect, granted a affordable housing in over 55 project. That is true in the land court level. But it was not the substance of the case, the substance of the decision of land court related to the standing issue and the lack of aggrieved party status of the petitioners, which is technically on appeal. There was a secondary aspect to the case, which we treat as dicta, but it's a flag from the court. And the court cited a 1980s Newton case relative to Newton attempting to regulate condominium ownership. And in that case, the court determining that you can't regulate ownership, you can only regulate the use. So, the judge asked all parties to address the issue and actually went beyond the determination that the threshold issue of aggrieved party status basically ends the petition of appeal. But I'm going to address this anyway. And we attempted to create a history analysis of how this language got in here. And notwithstanding that analysis, he basically said, 'understand, but this ownership phrase is nonenforceable.' And the history, very quickly, of this type of housing was, I believe, South Pro had its housing authority housing in the 1970s. So, it had initially, the first type of housing for elderly was basically public housing or that regulated by the South Pro Housing Authority. Then there was a perceived need, I believe, in the 1980s that there was not enough alternatives available for residents, elderly or older residents, to sell their homes to younger people or their family and to move into other housing in the town. So, in 1998, this language came in, I would call it inadvertently as an attempted resolution, and it wasn't a resolution. This language stayed in through several zoning changes, which created an incentive for private development. And that private development by ratios and a number of other zoning requirements resulted in several projects being developed in the town, none of which, in their permitting, ever referenced this language. So, what you've got is you've got an original obsolete illegal reference to something back in the early, well, the 1980s, but incorporated in 1997 and 1998, which is irrelevant and unenforceable. So, when a court says to a town, and a lot of towns don't do this, but they should, when a court says to a town, 'this provision is nonenforceable,' then if we're not going to do a comprehensive zoning change with that information at present, we should, my responsibility is to identify it as something that needs to be removed. Now, I have heard something about, well, we should wait for the appeal to finish, and that case is on appeal, to the Mass Appeals Court, the decision that upheld the zoning board of appeals. And it doesn't matter. Whatever the decision is of the appeals court, either upholding the ZBA or overturning the ZBA, this language is still defective. So, all you're doing is you're cleaning out a relic of an attempt, starting in the 1980s, to create an alternative of over 55 housing in the town, which never was used and can't be used.
So, Counselor, thank you very much for your clarification on that and sharing your views on the matter. Personally, because the case is still pending, my feeling is that we should not proceed with this change. And on that basis, I do not support the bylaw.
I have a question. When we voted to bring the article forward at our meeting, I believe it was on the 6th of February, you were, we agreed not to do a couple of the other over 55 stuff that we were talking about relative to the percentage and things like that, but you voted to let this, to bring this article forward?
For the public hearing.
Well, we were voting for town meeting, but, which required public hearing, but...
I apologize. My understanding was we were voting for what we were going to put forward for the public hearing. It must have been a misunderstanding on my part.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the public? Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Latrell?
Mimi Latrell, 19 Oregon Road. In interest of full disclosure, I am one of the plaintiffs in the aforementioned case. I'm opposed to just striking this language on the bylaw because, as town council mentioned, it had, the intention was to avail housing for seniors to be able to downsize and afford to stay in town. So, this was an attempt to have moderate-priced housings that seniors could afford. In reality, this bylaw has created very high-end over 55 housing. And if we're going to change the bylaw, we should change it so that it follows the intention of the regular bylaw, that there should be some affordability built into it. The recent housing plan that was just adopted by this board, CHOPC, and the Board of Selectmen, over and over again says there needs to be alternatives for older adults other than the high-end over 55 that we have. It also says that the projections going forward, that units for over 55 are going, the need for units for that demographic are going to decrease between 2010 and 2020. So, A, the town planned, the town paid for a housing production plan, shouldn't we try? And if we're changing the bylaw, shouldn't we try and make the bylaw fit with the goals of that plan? I'm sorry.
All right. At the meeting where we voted, what would go to this coming town meeting versus what we'd put off till the next town meeting? We had three different aspects of this bylaw that we wanted to fix. The easiest, I told, I said if I used that word, it would be a problem, was to delete the language that has been determined by the courts to be nonenforceable and just get rid of it. But we also wanted to look at where within, I can't remember, four units or something of our maximum of over 55 or 14 units, whatever it is, but we'd be frozen until, for quite a while if we didn't change the percentage and from 7% to, up to 10%. We were discussing that. And more importantly, to your point, we also talked about the problem that the bylaw did not create affordable over 55 housing. There were no deed restrictions or other mechanisms used by the town to ensure that a percentage of the units were affordable or all of them, well, you know, bring your price points down on the basis of shorter roads and different allowances for density clusters and things like that. It was clear in the discussion that the board amongst itself was not ready to propose specific ways of achieving that. So, the only thing that we agreed to bring forth to this town meeting was the elimination of the legally contradictory language and to work as a board to be ready for the next town meeting, whether that's a fall or whether that is an annual, to address the issue of how to make the over 55 have an affordability factor and to look at whether the current percentage is too low based upon the need that you reference. So, we're just, we're not saying we won't do it, we're just not ready amongst ourselves to do it.
My question is this. This is a special permit, which is supposed to be a give and take. The developer is allowed to do things that aren't allowed by right in zoning and the town gets something back in exchange. If you just strike this, what is the town getting in exchange? It's getting high-end over 55s, which all through the housing plan said we don't need.
Mimi, in the, I didn't like the bylaw when it got done. And I wasn't on the planning board and I didn't get up at town meeting and speak off on it because there were a whole lot of other political reasons why I didn't. But in that, in the bylaw... But in that, in the bylaw, the special permit in negotiation that you correctly identified did not put affordable housing in. It, but it was in there. It's there, that's one of the, there's like 10 or 12 things that benefits to the town to be accrued if you allow the over-55. And it could be transportation, it could be environmental protection, it could be the affordability of the elderly units. There was a whole list with none of them prioritized, but as long as they could say, show in their application that it was providing two or three of these incentives, it made them eligible to build it. Now, if we want to say now that, today if someone brought in over-55 in, that we should negotiate for the affordability factor, it's not highlighted in the benefits to be accrued by the town as having any more weight than all these others. So that, and if, if we eliminate the language, what have we lost? Nothing. These negotiations have gone on, and they've gone on with the private sector, and they can go on with a nonprofit. We, if, and if someone said, "We're going to sue you," because it's more and more litigious all the time, we already know we would not win. Counsel is telling us the language is undefensible. The judge is telling every community in the state the language is undefensible.
So the judge said that it's nonenforceable, so the ZBA was within their right to issue the special permit. So why not just leave it until you make all the other changes to the over-55 that you want to? It's been there since, you know, 1986.
I'm going to let Aldo address it. He's saying he will.
That, that phrase saves nothing in terms of the intent for affordable over-55 housing. Your member, Ms. Bartolini, is correct that delete the language, and there is still permissible over-55 or elderly housing throughout the bylaw, subject to a special permit and further subject to the criteria of that special permit, and that is well detailed in 174-9H. And not to belabor all the points, but there are many of the points that have been utilized for these project from beginning. I happen to be involved in, I think, the second project where there was, the ZBA struggled with attempting to constrain sale and resale value, the amount the units were going to be sold for. And this was all new for Southborough, but it was very important because the whole theory was to allow the elderly to sell or convey their 50s ranches or their 70s splits to their family or to new people, preferably even public safety and public workspeople, and to live comfortably in their town in a community atmosphere. Nothing changes of that in terms of what this bylaw has in effect. You can't use that phrase. It's of no value. The protection or the permission of what is going to be allowed by a special permit is in the section that I just cited and what your member, Ms. Bartolini, indicated. So, and why do we take it out? Because it has been identified in dicta as part of the case, as a reference, not to the substance of the case, but as a reference to part of the case, that this is violating a standard in Massachusetts. Now, I suppose I could have said, "I won't say anything to my town and will let it stay there." But my responsibility is to identify it and to attempt to cure it based upon judicial decision. And again, I fervently believe that regardless of who wins or loses on the appeal court level, it's not going to affect that paragraph. That paragraph needs to be deleted.
If there's something new to add, Mimi?
Well, I'll just say that the bylaw has not achieved the intention that it was adopted for.
Agreed.
So why not fix it to get it to achieve what the original intention was, to create some affordability for over-55 people to remain in town?
I think there's complete agreement on that. Freddie?
Hi, I'm Freddie Gillespie, 78 Southville Road, and I'm not speaking for any commission or committee I may sit on, but I will say, I did participate in that housing plan. We had meetings. I am engaged in reviewing affordable housing projects through the Community Preservation Committee. So I'm aware of the need and the desire, the desire for housing that reflects different income levels throughout the town, especially for seniors. And I have no investment in any of that legal case at all, I'm just talking purely on the zoning. And when you look at the over-55, and it's actually elderly housing, and there was an intent for it to be affordable, and that hasn't been realized, and the housing plan that we spent money on, many people participated in, your board, the Selectmen have signed off on it, it's gone to the state, says that in 2020, that's four years from now, we will have 176 too many of these units. So if you're looking at a bylaw that doesn't meet the goal of creating the affordable diversity housing you want, what it does allow is dense development, denser than our standard zoning. I believe it's three units per acre. So if you have an acre next to you, it could become three senior housing units instead of one. There's no, none of the other give-and-takes for a larger multifamily housing where there's open space and other give-and-takes. It's just expensive housing that's not needed in the town. And once you have that glut, and there's no more seniors to take it, what then? I mean, it's not going to supply the over-55. We know that in some towns, they're already petitioning because they can't get people to buy the over-55s to remove it. So my question is, if you want to fix it, and you're not ready to make the bylaw do what the bylaw's intention was, instead of taking away language, take away the whole bylaw. Just take it out. It's not needed, there's only a few units left. And then when you can come up with a better, well-thought-out replacement to accomplish the goals that the town wants to accomplish, put a new one in. But if you're going to take something out, don't just rip something out of the existing bylaw that had an intention. Take the whole thing out. Get rid of it. It's not needed. It's housing that's not being used. And we certainly know that there's something like over 300 units coming in that seniors can move to if they need another kind of housing.
Could we ask Town Council if, if somebody were to put an amendment to this article at town meeting to remove the whole section relative to the over-55? Would that, would that be allowed?
Based upon the fact that you're sending forward the deletion of that phrase, that's probably going to be beyond the scope of the article. Because you're going from the deletion of four words to the striking of the entire provision, and I don't think that that could be foreseen to the public.
I also, as I was listening to this and taking notes, and it's so frustrating because I'm the one pushing for affordable housing, but if, if these things were being brought up, if the article is just for the deletion of those, that phrase repeatedly through five different districts, wouldn't the issue of the density of the units allowed in over-55 and the current expense, et cetera, be outside the domain, the domainness?
What you're saying is, yeah.
I think the debate that we're having tonight isn't even germane to the words.
That's right.
And I'm for doing this stuff.
That's right. Because what you're now hearing is somehow this entire regulatory provision is obsolete. And the genesis of what's before you is that one phrase can't be used. It doesn't support anything that anybody wants that's spoken before me. It can't be used, it's defective. And all you need to consider is that. If there's, if there's a purpose to go through the evaluation of an entire aspect of your zoning, you have the authority to do that, but that would require some comprehensive analysis and further public hearings, because that's not the subject of these public hearings.
Clear, I wasn't suggesting that. I'm well aware that amendment like that would be outside the scope of this hearing. I was more intending to offer the planning board a suggestion that when you're looking at the zoning bylaw, instead of doing a Band-Aid approach that doesn't really work and accomplish the goals that your own plans state that you're trying to achieve, that instead of doing that, this hearing would have been better suited to look at replacing the bylaw to do what you want it to do, or taking it off the books because it doesn't accomplish anything that's wanted.
Like we did with the ZAC. Over-55 got eliminated.
It did get eliminated under the ZAC. And so that's the point. I mean, right now, I don't know that you can't have another hearing and say you want to do something different.
Well, not between now and April.
Any more questions or comments on this public hearing? Warren article to eliminate the nonprofit ownership of housing for the elderly 55 and over units?
Seeing none, I'll make a motion?
Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to close the hearing. Mrs. Bartolini?
I make a motion that we close the public hearing for the Warren article to eliminate nonprofit ownership of housing for the elderly 55-plus units.
Second.
Eliminate the wording, not eliminate the housing. Warren article to eliminate, so wording for, I was reading it directly from what the hearing, hearing thing said, but Warren article wording whereby we'll eliminate the wording for nonprofit home ownership and for housing 55 and up.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Five to zero. Thank you. Public hearing for that one's closed. The next item on the...
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Bartolini.
Next item on the agenda is, three, next three articles on the agenda relate to Park Central, which I need to recuse myself from. And everyone I see here is also here for the 820 article relative to the Town Planner interview recommendation.
How would you know that?
Well, I'm guessing that Mr. Rooney's here and Karen's here and, anyways, I don't care who the hell is here. I am going to request that we move the 820 up so I'll know what's going on with Town Planner, and then I will leave.
It is fine with me since it's after 820, and that's a very short item tonight. We had originally put this on, this is a second revision of our agenda, and initially it was planned to have a candidate come tonight, but that got changed earlier today, and so there will be no candidate here tonight, and therefore there will be no interview and there will be no recommendation, and we'll keep, we'll keep the public informed as to how that's going, but...
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
Was my understanding that we were going to get the names of one or more people and look at the resume and agree that that could be the only one we did, or we'd look at the top three and then say whether they came in to be interviewed by the whole planning board? And I don't, how would we be at a point that we were going to interview a person tonight if the planning board hadn't been given the progress report that we were that far along?
The working group, this is the way it was reported to me, I'm not on the working group, went through the resumes and conducted, hold on a sec. Allo, you're not leaving, are you?
Oh, no, I guess I'm not.
Oh, no, here, there's a folder, there's a folder here for you. That's all, there's a folder. Although you might be able to help on the...
I think it's left over from last night.
You might be able to help on this, the discussion item on the traffic concerns, which will be right after this.
Okay.
So they went through the resumes, there were interviews conducted, and it was my understanding that only one candidate was recommended to come forward for an interview with the full board, and that was intended for today, but it didn't happen. It may happen in the near future, but as things unfolded today, it's not going to happen tonight.
Is there a way that the planning board, because I, usually there is like two or three names, and then if we look at the resumes and just agree that only one should be interviewed by us, that only one gets interviewed?
I'll let, Mr. Jenks is on the working group.
There are two members of the planning board on the working group, Mr. Stein and myself. We looked at a lot of resumes, we've interviewed some candidates. The next step in the process, as I understand it, is the board chair will interview a or more than a single candidate that we put forth, and then the total planning board will interview the candidate in a public session. We are not at that point yet. This maybe is unfortunate wording on the agenda. It was intended to be a report of where we are in the process, not, not an interview tonight.
The, that wording came from me, based on my knowledge earlier in the week of what may happen. So unless these items were on here, we, if, if the board got to the point of the interview and a recommendation, then we could do it. And I was told that if those words weren't there, then if we wanted to do it, we couldn't. And that's why they're there. Anything else on that one?
No.
Did you just hand somebody, Destiny, the minutes? Your...
My handwritten ones that I had promised that I would do.
Excellent. Thank you. We're going over the, Hillary and I were going over the minutes this afternoon, so that's good. Thanks, Kathy.
That's why I couldn't find them in the pile.
So I'll go back to the next item on the agenda, which is a discussion. And the reason it's on here is because I received a phone call from a resident on Deerfoot Road who then submitted a note and then a follow-up and asked, and she indicated that she would be at the Monday night meeting to read these and to be able to speak beyond her written notes. And then she subsequently informed me that because we moved the meeting from Monday because of the snow to tonight, that she wasn't able to make it here tonight, and she asked if I would read these. And then also briefly go over the scenic road bylaw applicability and process. So the first note is from Barbara Ramsdale, she's at 26 Deerfoot Road, and it stated January 15th, 2016. "When initial planning was underway for the Trotter Middle School," and I'm just saying this, it's not part of the note, but that's between Parkerville Road and Deerfoot Road. "Town committees met with both Parkerville and Deerfoot Road neighbors to discuss the impact of traffic that would result from new construction. Together, a resolution was reached allowing safety first. As a 48-year resident of 26 Deerfoot Road, I am deeply worried about the threatening increase in traffic on Flag Road and Deerfoot Road created by the proposed development of the Capital Group Park Central project. Here on these two roads, there are no..." Here on these two roads, there are no sidewalks, only narrow rural passages with old trees and unforgiving stone walls, limiting consistent visibility and easy travel, even under the best of current driving conditions. Thoroughfare traffic was never the intent of the original designers. Before final approval is given to this proposed construction, I am requesting a meeting of affected neighbors, Trotter School representatives, and appropriate town officials. Such a discussion seems both fair and prudent. Thank you for your attention to this matter, and it's signed Barbara Ramsdale, 26 Deerfoot Road. And then that was dated January 15, and then another note dated February 6, last Saturday. And I'm reading this, she intended to read this on Monday, so there's eyes in here, and it's her words. A follow-up comment after I read my letter of January 15. Numerous plans are rumored about the future road changes to both Flag and Deerfoot Roads. I am here this evening to urge the planning board to continue its engagement in enforcing the town of Southborough's scenic road bylaw, requiring input from the tree warden—the town tree warden and other appropriate town officials, selectmen, DPW, and planning board, before trees are removed and stone walls repositioned. Ideally, it seems appropriate to include neighbors of both Flag and Deerfoot Road in any scheduled discussions. Finally, it is critical that neighbors be directly notified when definite plans are finalized and before construction changes are underway. Thank you for your attention to this matter. So, I did have a phone call with Mrs. Ramsdale, and during that, she asked about the process of making changes to an existing public way, which Flag and Deerfoot are. And I referred to the scenic road bylaw, which both roads are, and I'm glad to see that we have people here that know more about the scenic road bylaw than I do. But I do know that at the—I believe it was the last ZBA meeting, the ZBA chairman correctly stated that the selectmen had authority on an existing way, which on Flag Road. There was no mention of—I don't think there was any mention of the scenic road bylaw or the process that that requires. And from our experience on the planning board, tree removal and stone wall removal or adjustment requires a public hearing that the planning board holds. Now, relative to the trees, the tree warden has a vote, along with the planning board, to either not remove trees, alter trees, or leave them alone. And relative to the stone walls, it's my understanding that the planning board's vote is required for any adjustment to a town-owned stone wall on a public way that's a scenic road. Does—Karen, are you able to—do I have that? And the reason I'm bringing this up isn't to—it's to inform the public. And she's informed me that other people are questioning, what's the process and who has the authority on this public—on the public way?
Can I just give you an update first on what we're doing, but then—
Yeah, my—yes. Yeah. Actually, I should have brought your email. Is that what you're going to talk about? The email on the safety group, the safety?
Yeah, I think so, yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, so just so the public does know that the proponent for the 40B heap and the ZBA, DPW, Fire Police, we're all working together to get a safety audit done for the entire corridor, Deerfoot and Flag Road, when that's with input and—
Can you tell us what a safety audit is?
It's to look at the road, because so many people have stood up and said the road's just unsafe, but then the traffic comes back and says it's really not unsafe, but there are perhaps things we can do that would benefit the—you know, increase safety or—but it's—right now, the road isn't at some sort of failure, I guess, is really what I'm trying to say. So, what they're going to do is we'll look at—it'll look at, what are your sight lines? You know, do you have a tree so close to the road that's actually causing a hazard? Do you have—is there—what recommendations are there that are amenable to the police and fire that would actually maybe calm some traffic? So, before all these recommendations, because there's been a lot of stuff kind of thrown out, and it really needs to be put together with input from public safety, but also with—in a comprehensive, kind of holistic way for the whole corridor, which then, once that report's done, would go to the selectman's office, and a selectman's meeting would be the public—the public discussion would happen. And I mean, we're definitely—there was talk, oh, we can take down these trees. Well, frankly, sometimes a tree slows people's—there's—there might be a couple that are actually having problems because they are getting hit a lot by vehicles, but it might not be all the ones. So, I—we really want to go over it more slowly. As far as where the tree, that is—that is an elbow question. But I'm not sure when that selectman's meeting's going to be because that report has not been completed yet.
Can you—there is a—again, from my experience, the DPW does have the authority to remove trees and not hold a public hearing if the tree is determined to be dead or dying or in a damaged state that—
Correct.
—it creates a safety hazard.
That's correct, yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
So, could the DPW just show up to a dead tree and cut it down without telling anybody, or does it still have to be posted?
No, it does not have to be posted. So, if it's a hazard, it doesn't have to be posted. It just can come down.
Are we aware of any dead trees along those two roads?
As a matter of fact, yes. Which there—it is—it's not one of the ones, I believe, that would be recommended to come down for part of the corridor study, but it is—it—I noticed it when I was looking at the trees that I thought we might be looking at, and it's definitely in bad shape.
So, maybe—maybe when that—there's a plan that I saw at—I think at the last ZBA meeting, when they were talking about traffic, there was a plan that identified, I think it was 35 trees on Flag and Deerfoot?
No, I've never seen anything with 35 trees at all. I haven't seen any trees identified. They've spoken several times about—at the ZBA, about eight trees that seem like they are intruding on the public way, that the asphalt's actually kind of paved up over the root system, but—you know, into the flare of the tree. But still not all of those are necessarily going to be in the final safety audit that would be worth taking down.
Do you have a timeframe for the safety audit, maybe, when it gets finished?
I would believe in—it should be done mid-March.
Mr. Mills?
Karen?
Don't go away.
Is Lovers Lane included in that safety audit? Because wouldn't that be just as much used as Deerfoot and Flag possibly?
It is actually not one that we—I had included in there.
Because talk about a narrow road.
Most people avoid Lovers Lane because it is so narrow, you can't come across another vehicle most ways. It's really hard to do anything with that. The nature of that road would change so drastically to do anything to it that it seems to kind of sit as an outlier, so.
From the standpoint of access, though, to Park Central, I would think that Flag or Lovers Lane could get almost as much use as—
It wasn't one in there if—I mean, at the ZBA meeting, it hasn't been coming up as a spot that anybody has as much concern about. Deerfoot and Flag seems to be the—the main—it's not that people probably won't go down it, but the nature of the road's not going to grab as much traffic as people just wanting to go down and get onto Main Street.
So, the scenic—the scenic road bylaw is the one that governs the public ways relative to trees and stone walls, correct? And I think that's on the town's website.
I got to tell you, the statute's regulating trees and public ways. Sometimes the interpretation tends to be more difficult than some of the most complex legal issues I've seen from municipalities. But let me just try to give you a—you're looking to kind of clarify for the public some of this procedure?
Not just the public—
No, okay.
—but those who have—that know they have some authority, and those that may have authority but don't know it, or those that don't have any authority and think they might.
Okay. I may not be—
So, that all of the town—the components of the town government can function within their authority and do the right thing for the neighbors on Deerfoot and Flag.
Okay. We're going to try to give a short tutorial on this, short.
Excellent.
Ultimately, in towns, it's the board of selectmen that control public ways. If you need to excavate the public way, you need to go to the board of selectmen. You want traffic regulation on a public way, you need to go to the board of selectmen. You want, as a utility company, to get permission to run different utility lines or modify that, you need to go to the board of selectmen. That's been the case since about the 1660s. Then you have the shade tree statute, Chapter 87, which was an attempt to protect those trees in the public road layout or on the boundary of the public road layout that were given over to local determination as to when they would be trimmed, cut, or removed. That statute came in the 1860s and was revised most recently, in some cases, in 1915. So, it was shade trees first, under 87. But then, under Chapter 40, Section 15(c), which came in in the early 1970s, we had the scenic road statute. Scenic road statute protected both those roads designated by a municipality as scenic, both for specific tree cutting or removal and the destruction or removal of stone walls. But both statutes kind of interlink in a crossover for certain reasons, needing a joint public hearing between the tree warden and the planning board. The planning board is the primary authority under scenic roads, as it relates exactly for anything to do with stone walls, and in many cases, relative to trees. But there are also exceptions between the two statutes that we had to read recently and render an opinion on, and that—those exceptions would permit some selective cutting that was unrelated to road widening, to reconstruction or maintenance, but may relate to issues such as site distance. In that particular case, solely and exclusively, it would be under a public hearing by the tree warden. I mean, that's basically the overview of authority.
That, along with what was said by Karen, I think—in the reading of this, is very much what I was asked to do as far as a—an agenda item for the planning board tonight, so that it would inform the public, inform the neighbors as to who's responsible for what, so that they can write letters to them, they can attend their meetings and provide input, and make sure that the process gets followed properly. So, I'm really glad that we have all—had all the key players here tonight. I'll just ask if there's any more questions or comments on that.
So, are Deerfoot, Flag, or either of those scenic roads?
All roads in the town of Southborough are scenic roads.
Thank you.
So designated. Anyone else? Mr. Mills?
Thank you for sticking around. Appreciate that.
Mr. Jenks, I'll sit. One of the things that was mentioned to me, specific to what the threat is or the concern is to Flag and Deerfoot, and it was a comparison to what has been going on at Park Central for a couple of decades, and that is that the curb cut at Park Central was limited to, I think, it's 65,000 square foot of office space, and that no further car trips as a result of additional square footage of development would be allowed to enter onto Route 9. And the reason for that, I was reminded, was that the infrastructure couldn't support it. And so, why if—why is a development held up because the infrastructure on Route 9 couldn't support it, and yet, for the same site, a project is not held up if the infrastructure on Flag Road and Deerfoot Road can't support it? I don't have the answer to that, but it sounded like a good question. If the—if the traffic from the site is too much for Route 9, then why isn't it too much for Flag and Deerfoot? So, that might be a question that's asked beyond this meeting to those in authority, and maybe we should start working on the answer. Is there anything else on this item? Good evening.
Hi. Wendy DeMichaelis, 15 Bantry Road. It seems I can't come to a meeting and not talk. But I'm really happy to hear that this safety study is being done. I think that's great. Just two things. One thing I definitely agree with, one thing that I don't. One is, I believe that Lovers Lane has come up a lot as kind of a gap in the overall analysis, but I do agree that what can you do there, right? But can something be done? Can we at least consider what could be done? Now, Mr. De Petri's traffic people have said there'll be signage here and there and lots of ways to mitigate other problems. Is there something that we can do on Lovers, at the least, at the same—in the same way? Like, local traffic only sign, or a speed bump at the beginning of Lovers Lane? I don't know. Can we at least talk about maybe how to try and disincentivize people to go down that road, because I use it on a regular basis. So, you can't assume that these other people won't as well. So, I think it would be a good idea to just try and look at it with foresight and think about Lovers Lane as well. Thank you.
Karen, is it too late to add Lovers Lane to that study?
I would just—I would have to go through and talk to a couple of people to find out, but we can look at it.
Thank you.
Anything else? Any other questions or comments on this one? Otherwise, I'll move on to the next agenda item. I'll sit. Next item on the agenda is discussion of independent counsel. I'll just attempt to give an update. The planning board has, in previous meetings, expressed concern about overreaching by the zoning board of appeals in their use variance. Discussion led to possibly obtaining independent counsel to guide the planning board relative to our perception of overreaching by the ZBA. A letter—the board voted to have the town planners request independent counsel. The town policy is that no board, including the planning board, even though we're elected and have our own budget, the town policy requires that any use of independent counsel has to be approved by the board of selectmen. At the time that the letter was written, there wasn't—it—there was—there's been one selectmen meeting. It was not on the agenda because there wasn't a quorum of selectmen to vote on that particular item. And so, that request to the selectmen is still on the table, and the reason it's on our agenda tonight is to see if the planning board wants to continue to ask the board of selectmen for permission to use independent counsel or to move on without it and do the best we can with what we have or what we know. So, I'll open it up to the board. So I'll open it up to the board, to see if you can add. Mr. Jenks, did you want to add to that, do a better job?
I'm not sure of better job. I can add a little bit. Just to recap, this request was related to the zoning board's grant of their use variance for the townhouse part of the Park Central project. And that, the conditions of that variance became a pill that was very difficult for the planning board to swallow, particularly affecting a regulation that is our bread and butter, site plan review. We've had a lot of discussion about how to, how we might continue to be involved in the site plan review. I, I think we've made some headway in that regard. And because of that, Mr. Chairman, I will move that we suspend that motion to seek independent counsel.
When you say sus- suspend-
Not take any action on it.
Not withdraw the request, but let it be known that action on it is to be not taken at this time?
Correct.
Is that your motion?
It is.
Any discussion, anybody want to second that, or have discussion?
I have a question. What's been the progress that makes you go in that direction?
We've had indication from a couple of members of the selectmen, and from the developer, and the developers' counsel, that there might, and, and the zoning board, that there might be a, let me make it stronger, that there will be a opportunity to have a real involvement in the site planning. I'm sorry, not the site planning, the review of the site plan.
I'm not sure where that leaves us. I mean, it sounds good. It sounds like progress. It doesn't sound like a definite, like we definitely have site plan authority over the forty-eight portion. But, given that, that you feel that way, Mr. Jenks, I'll go along with it.
Mr. Mills?
We have no second for that.
Second. No comment.
The way the, so the motion's been made and seconded. The way the motion was made and worded still keeps that request on the, on the table, but with no action at this time. I think it was the last ZBA meeting, it was stated, there was a, like a schedule stated that the letters from the neighbors, including the one from the planning board, would be discussed at the end of February ZBA meeting. So I'm certainly looking forward to that. I know at the last ZBA meeting, the letters were acknowledged as being received, but I didn't, I don't remember hearing or seeing anybody going into the details of those letters, or how they were, how the comments were gonna be addressed. So, I believe that was stated by the ZBA that that's what would happen on February, the late February meeting, followed by, I could have this wrong, but I got the impression that, that they would be ready to vote in, on, on the meeting at the end of March. Which kind of isn't that far away, and it seems like there's still a lot of things that still haven't been resolved. One thing, for example, is the final engineering drawings, which I think we were, stated to the public, would, would be received in last summer, and we, and we still don't have them, that I know of. So, it seems like it's just gonna take longer to get to that point of the ZBA taking a vote than was stated at, at the meeting, or implied at the meeting. So I think for that reason, it gave, it should give the planning board some, a little bit of comfort that we can still have that request out there, but don't need to jump on it right away and, and allow the process to unfold a little bit more, and, and see how our jurisdiction is handled, and, and the jurisdiction of others. Now, there's that third element of jurisdiction beyond the site, which is now Flag Road and Deerfoot Road. So this is, this project, this, this whole, these, these projects, the forty-eight and the forty-eight B, are, you know, reaching out into additional areas in town, and also reaching out into a different, additional jurisdictions beyond the planning board and the ZBA. Now it's going into the Board of Selectmen. So I'm, I feel a little bit, I feel that we can do this at this time. I wanted to put it on the agenda, wasn't sure how, which way it was gonna go. But, we, we meet quite frequently between now and town meeting, and we're pretty good at, at holding meetings outside of our normal schedule if we had to. So, any more discussion on that? Mr. Jenks?
Yeah, there, there was one other point that is relative, the information is relatively new. I, I had, from the time of the ZBA's variance vote, been assuming that the, the limited, the vote, the condition for limited review by the planning board was the work of the developer. I apologize, the developer's attorney has recently informed us that that was a request from the neighbors, that the planning board not be involved in the site plan. That's kind of a different picture, and I think may ultimately lead to other possibilities for developing a, a real role for the planning board.
I would just suggest that until the neighbors who suggested that are identified, that we keep an open mind as to how many and which neighbors actually said that. It seems to contradict the comments that I've received from neighbors.
I'm merely passing on what the applicant's counsel told us.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor? Order zero to suspend the action on that special, independent counsel. Next item on the agenda is a discussion of Park Central. I put this on the agenda, just in case anybody wants to talk about Park Central. Mr. Jenks?
I have a question. There was a, I think, a site walk scheduled for MIPA, which I wasn't able to attend, and just wondering if anyone did show up and how that went? Any new?
I was there.
New information, or?
I was there. I, I had the notice. And I showed up at eleven o'clock. Unfortunately, when I read the notice, I had the wrong number on, of the building. So I was actually at the building at Park Central. And I believe the, the first, the eleven o'clock part of the site visit was actually half a mile down the road at another building. So, I hung around for about forty-five minutes, knowing that as soon as I drove down to the other building, that on the eastbound lane, that they would be coming on the westbound lane. Another matter came up that caused me to not do that. After I left the site, I had to come here to the town hall. And when I finished with the town hall business and went back to the site, I sure enough could see all of the cars that I knew, but didn't see any, anyone, and I didn't want to go roaming around out there. So, I missed the site walk, but if, Mr., were you there, Bill? Did you wanna, did you wanna?
I didn't go to the site walk. I've been to the site many times, but about, I'm gonna say twenty people showed up to the MIPA meeting. Couple neighbors. Mostly ten, twelve people were from my team to answer questions. One person from MIPA. Concom was there with two or three people. The building inspector was there. Carl was there. I think that was it for the town.
There was a consultant's truck, truck there. Was that, was that your consultant?
Yes. Yeah, all the consultants were on my team, correct. Well, no, one of them was Lucas, which was the town's conservation consultant. All the other ones are ours, correct. Yep. They, the meeting lasted about an hour at the office building inside where it was warm. And then they went up and some of them walked the site. I'd probably say half the people ended up walking the site. And I think that lasted maybe another forty-five minutes. No real surprise.
Thank you for doing that. Is there any additional follow-up to that, MIPA? What's the next step with that, with that?
I believe the, all the state agencies and the, and the town departments have a certain amount of time to submit comments back to MIPA. I don't know what the, what the deadline is, but it's part of the MIPA, MIPA package that was submitted to everybody. I believe the planning board should have one.
We do.
Okay, yeah. Yep.
Thank you. Anything more on on additional items properly before the board? We have the planner's report. I have a couple of other items, and then the minutes. Our next meeting is February twenty-second. Public hearing, St. Mark's School Solar. Road acceptance, William Calery Lane. Road acceptance, Fox Hill Drive. Open space acceptance, Killam Farm Estates. Open space acceptance, Pine Hill Estates, conservation restriction. A new item that was added is the discussion of a sign for three fifty-two Turnpike Road. And we have only one deadline that's coming up rather soon, which is still over a month away, which is the St. Mark's Solar. Do we have a field for attendance for the February twenty-second meeting?
I will not be there. I can be there.
Sounds good. Well, that's, that's good. Jesse, I'm gonna give you this. This is a, it's called The Beacon. Municipal, Massachusetts Municipal Association publication. And in your solar presentation, you had the green communities grants. In this publication, I, I couldn't believe, believe it here. It says, "The Department of Energy Resources awarded the following funding for projects in the newly designated green communities." And there must be fifteen or twenty communities here. And it looks like the smallest grant was over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. It's a huge amount of money that these towns are getting. Weymouth got over a quarter of a million. So I'll give you this, and maybe you can help, and you, you know, it might help you in the presentation.
It will. I spoke with Kelly Brown.
Oh, yeah.
And she was very helpful, and she pointed out that, you know, making these communities more energy efficient, you know, has so much, so much gain for the, for the municipalities in question. So these funds are really being put to, to good use in that capacity.
We got some correspondence from Town of Hopkinton. They're proposing to amend their zoning bylaw and zoning map. Public hearing will be held the same night as our next meeting, February twenty-second. That was brought to our attention. Westboro. So, a zoning article. Public hearing for that is coming, is coming up on February sixteenth. This goes so much smoother when there's a town planner. And then, we got this, this map. This is the the site on Route eighty-five, the, the old N-Star site. What is it now? Eversource? And there's still some work to be done at that site. Even though it's fully, fully functional for a parking area, there's some hoods that need to be installed on those existing catch basins. This is a plan to remind us that that still has to be done. And then, further up on Route eighty-five at La Haye Circle. You've noticed that this house, there's a house that's been constructed on Lot one. And there was a concern about them going into the open space easement. And this map was prepared to identify that and take corrective action. I actually ran into Mike Sullivan on this one, and he prepared this map, if you guys want to look at it. It's, it has to do mostly with Conservation Commission, but they gave that to us for our, our information. Before we go on to the minutes. Oh. Our budget. Our budget was submitted for, the planning board's budget for FY seventeen was submitted in totals of a hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four. And we received a note, along with all the other departments, that that budget, our budget was revised, assumed that the others were revised also. It's a revision as a result of the cost of living adjustment. I think I was told that it was anticipated to be a three percent COLA, and it was actually a two percent COLA. So our budget, as a result of that, went from one forty-nine, seven seventy-four to one forty-eight, nine oh two. The if you remember at our previous meeting, I'm trying to see what date it was. Might have been our last meeting. We discussed the Choate Field Lights. And the planning board voted with two conditions to approve that site plan. Major site plan approval. And that decision of major site plan approval was finished today. I signed it, and it, it was stamped by the town clerk, so. And the, and the rec department was notified that we did that. And the, and the Rec Department was notified that we did that.
Can you remind us what the two conditions were?
The applicant agrees not to reuse any of the existing light fixtures on any of the new poles that will be installed. That's condition number one. Condition number two is no light shall shine into the house of Phil Jenks. It said, lighting, number two says, lighting shall, it's long, lighting shall be installed in accordance with the approved plans. It basically talks about that we should be notified once they're done. The Planning Board has one year to review the illumination. During this review period, the Planning Board reserves the right to require adjustment of, and, and/or the number and intensity of the, of the fixtures to address insufficient or spillover, insufficient light or spillover onto adjacent properties. It's also understood that the light levels will not go below standard safety requirements. Night lighting, nighttime lighting shall be minimized to the extent possible based upon usage of the property and standard safety requirements. All adjustments will be made by the Rec Department.
Thank you.
And then, oh, there was two pieces of correspondence from DPW. One was dated November 17th, that I didn't remember seeing, so I wanted to see if you guys saw it. It had to do with Park Central Comprehensive Permit Plan. Couple pages. And then, oh, that's November 17th. And then, okay, these are for us. There's four of them. And then, most recently, January 28th, from DPW, is oh, it's comments from the, from the DPW relative to the traffic at Park Central. And these are, are pretty interesting comments. They reflect what the DPW Director said here tonight. And they leave, they, they ask, her comments are, in some, some areas, asking for more information or pointing to areas that maybe need to be looked at a little bit more, so. I thought this was pretty good. We just, we just got this today. It's dated January 28th. It was sent to the ZBA and copied to the Board of Selectmen, Town Administrator Building Inspector, from the DPW Superintendent. I think the only other item that we have to go over, oh, bef, did you want to do minutes next? I wanted to talk about the Planning Department, how it's functioning without a town planner. Did you want to do minutes first or go on to that?
Two minutes.
We have four sets of minutes. January 6th, no, December 7th, December 21st, January 6th, and January 25th. Does that sound right?
The 21st.
We got December 7th, December 21st, January 6th. That's the one we had at the library. And then January 25th. So entertain a motion. I know the ones from December 7th were revised. So anybody want to do a motion on any of these?
Make a motion, we accept the minutes for December 7th as, with revisions.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Order zero. Thank you. December 7th, Destiny. Next one would be December 21st.
Make a motion, we accept December 21st minutes as written.
Motion's been made and seconded. The, the notes that Kathy gave you hadn't, didn't apply to these, right? Yeah, okay, that's the last one we'll get to. Yeah, right, yep. Okay. Why that one keeps missing? So, okay, motion was made and seconded for December 21st. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Four to zero, December 21st. Next one would be?
6th, January 6th. Is that what Kathy has minutes for?
Okay, we don't have, you, you guys don't have the January 6th?
No.
Okay.
I have October 5th.
October 5th, Mr. Mills?
Make a motion, we accept the meeting minutes from October 5th, as written.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Three and one abstention. Mr. Jenks is abstaining. And next one would be?
And next to it, Kathy put minutes there?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the meeting minutes, the meeting on January 12th.
Need a mic, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the minutes for the meeting on January 25th as written.
Second, I don't think it was there.
We may not have a quorum for this, Mr. Chairman, as.
Yeah, we also have notes from Mrs. Bartolini on that, that Destiny needs to take a look at.
I withdraw the motion.
Okay. So fortunately, that's a very recent meeting. And then, so we just did three. October, two in December. That's all we have for now. Meeting minutes takes care of that, agenda item. Planner's Report. I can tell you that I have, like, like in the past, when we've been between town planners, have, have been able to show up at the Town Hall almost every day now to try to help along or stay out of the way. I can tell you that Hillary has really done an outstanding job keeping up with the things that were open-ended at the time that the town planner left, and they were open-ended only because it wasn't, the town planner wasn't able to address them due to time. And not her time, but the timing, there wasn't enough information for the town planner to proceed. From what I could tell, absolutely every, I cannot find one thing that was left open for the town planner to do that she didn't do, that she could do. So Hillary has picked up some of those items and kept them moving. For example, the, and, and finished them. One example is the Choate Lights decision tonight that, that we talked about. She's been working with Destiny, coordinating on the, on the minutes. She's, she got our packet out early for this meeting. The agenda was revised twice. She's been a big help, and it's no different, well, I guess it's even, she has more horsepower now than she did the last time, two, three years ago, when we didn't have a town planner. But, you know, she's just really stepped up and keeping things moving. And I just wanted to make sure that, that the public knew that. She's there, she doesn't leave for lunch. When she gets there, she stays all day. And she, she's really done a great job, in my opinion. Was that it?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Planning Board is adjourned. Thank you.